Good evening, everyone. Prior to me bringing the meeting to order, I just want to speak to those who are watching livestream. It's a little bit different format, certainly a different world since two weeks ago. The council has been spread out and there's a bit of distancing. When I ask for votes, it won't be displayed up in the screens. It's going to be a show of hands and I'll read out those that are opposed, as I usually do. We've made sure that there's spacing in the gallery, although I think most people are at home watching online, so certainly a few changes. So with that, I want to bring the regular evening meeting of Township Langley Council to order. And the first item is adoption of the agenda items. With, I'd like to change that we move J, which is the mayor's report, to immediately after the adoption of the minutes B, and include the supplemental agenda. So with that, I'll ask for motion. Council Ferguson, second by Council Arnesson. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Now I need a motion to up the minutes of the regular evening council meeting of March 9th and the public hearing meeting of March 9th. Council Long and Second, or Second, or Council Davis. Any errors or missions? All those in favor, opposed, carried. So with that, I'm going to move on to the mayor's report. So good evening, everyone. I would like to start by acknowledging that we're on the traditional territories of the Quantlin, Casey, Semiamo, and Masque First Nations. As you can see, this council meeting will vary from the standard procedure as we respond to unprecedented circumstances in our community and around the world. Physical distancing measures have been put in place and the structure of the meeting will be different as we deal with a number of issues to ensure everyone's safety and keep our community functioning as normally as possible as we prepare for the circumstances before us. The threat of COVID-19 is causing things to change rapidly and constantly, and council is taking measures to stay on top of the situation. All members of council are dedicated to serving this community and are doing everything in their power to protect and support our residents and staff during this extraordinary time, all in an effort to mitigate the impact of this disease. Tonight, we will take steps to move the budget forward so that it can be considered by council and thereby the necessary funding made available to township staff, who may then carry on operating the municipality and providing the services that we all depend on. We will also consider declaring a local state of emergency. This will give us the tools to support a local emergency operations centre. The EOC was activated at Level 1 on March 19th, in order to provide a centralized information and response centre and to ensure that the appropriate levels of services are in place to support our community. Tonight, we will consider a council procedural bylaw amendment that will allow us to hold council meetings electronically. Final reading of the bylaw amendment will be held during a special meeting on council of council on Friday, March 27th. And from then on, the work of council will be done electronically, thereby reducing personal interaction. Residents who would like to address council are asked to do so via email. This will help manage upcoming council meetings and streamline content for the essential priority items. Throughout BC, mayors and councils are working together to manage through this crisis, but issues will, of course, come up that are unique to each community. And by declaring a local state of emergency, it permits the municipality the flexibility needed to address issues pertinent to the township of Langley. Each issue will be addressed as they arise and dealt with appropriately, such as the recent decision to close our recreation centres and playgrounds in an effort to help limit the transmission of the virus. We also want to recognize and thank our first responders, the doctors, nurses, hospital staff, healthcare providers, transit operators, police and fire personnel, and the employees in our grocery stores and drugstores, who are ensuring the public has access to important supplies. I have complete confidence in our township leaders and would especially like to thank Fire Chief Stephen Gamble, Langley RCP Superintendent Murray Power, our senior staff members, and the committed leadership of our CAO, Mark Backen, all of whom are working around the clock, continuously reviewing information, planning, and making decisions to ensure our community continues to be safe and operational. I want to convey council's appreciation and complete confidence in our municipal employees. The members of QP Local 403, IAFF Local 4550 are firefighters and are paid-on-call firefighters. Yesterday, I was out driving through Fort Laney and stopped to thank a township staff person who was out checking on the pump station. And earlier today, I met staff member Matt at one of our local pocket parks, who was ensuring the closure signage for the playground was in place. Council appreciates the work that you are doing. You are dedicated to serving our residents, keeping us safe and protected. You ensure our water, sewer, and road systems are operating and all essential services functioning. We are grateful for your commitment and professionalism. Finally, a recap to everyone, and as Dr. Bonnie Henry reminds us daily, it's imperative that we maintain physical distancing of no less than two meters, shop smartly, don't hoard, wash your hands often. These efforts will make a difference. As a community and as individuals, how we respond to this pandemic now will be vital in the weeks and months to come. We encourage everyone to visit tol.ca regularly for up-to-date information on the township's response of the pandemic, along with links to websites with important COVID-19 information. Please be safe and stay healthy. Thank you. So with that, did Council Arnesson, do you want to add something on the library? I know you wanted to make a comment on the library. Your mic goes on.
Caught off guard a little bit. Just, I want to share some information. I'm the library representative for the township of Langley. I guess I'll just ad lib. I just wanted to let everybody know that the library, as many would be aware, is actually physically closed now for the protection of the public as well as employees. But there have been considerable efforts from the executive to try and pivot from this very difficult situation and make many, many different products that are available, otherwise even more broadly available. So eBooks and many other articles that electronically don't pose any problem to people who are using them. Oh, sorry, I'm getting feedback from being close to my microphone. And I just want to say that I totally appreciate all of these efforts. I know that our staff is still working very diligently. We've kept them on as long as possible, working in the libraries, doing extra cleaning. And there is some considerable consideration of doing further detailed analysis as to how long a virus can actually live on a book, because we're not really sure that it's very unprecedented to know if people will become infected. And the final thing I want to say is that the library is doing a very good job about reaching out to people who otherwise would be very isolated and who depend on these kind of materials to enliven and entertain them. So by phone call and other means, not directly contacting the person, obviously, for reasons of the spread of the virus, but making sure that people still feel connected and part of the community. So I just wanted to commend the library very much and let people know, and if you're interested in to see what products are available. In terms of live streaming, there's a big virtual party that's being planned. There's all sorts of things that the library is planning. So if you have an interest in that, I think people would be well-served to go and take a look there. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Council Arnesson. Virtual parties, I think there'll be a few virtual parties being held in the next little while. So now we move on to bylaws for first and second reading, and I'm going to start with F1. Could I have a motion, please? Council Davis, the Seconder. Council Long, is there any discussion on F1? Seeing none, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, opposed. And Council Woodward, opposed, and the motion carries. Thank you. F2 is resoning application number, sorry, F2 is resoning application 100615 and development permit 101020 and 101032, bylaw 5570 and 5571. Can I have a motion, please? Council Long, Seconder. Have a second?
Second.
Council Whitmarsh, discussion? All those in favor, opposed. Council Richter, opposed, motion carries. I will add that of all the first and second readings, there is a duty to hold a public hearing, but there is no date given because of the situation. It is left a little bit open this time. F3 is resoning application number 100552 and development permit application number 101046, bylaw 5523 and 5524. Can I have a motion, please? Council Ferguson, the Seconder. Have a second. Council Long, any discussion? Seeing none, call Council Richter. Let me, your mic on. F3, Council Richter?
Yeah, I just noted that there are 26 significant trees. Only one will be retained. Thirty-eight replacement trees are required, but 10 will be put in another location. I'm just wondering why they couldn't put all the replacement trees on their development.
Mr. Sefi.
Your worship, it's because of the type of housing, a single-family format, and because of that, to provide for the building envelope as per the zoning bylaw, it doesn't lend itself well to more protection, but they are complying with the tree protection provisions of the zoning bylaw.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor, opposed. Council Richter, opposed, the motion carries. F4 is resoning application number 100528 and development variance permit 100119, bylaw 5477 and 5572. Can I have a motion, please? Council Davis, Seconder. Council Ferguson, discussion on F4. Council Richter?
A hundred and nine significant trees on this property, and only 33 will be retained. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, opposed. Council Richter, opposed, the motion carries. Oh, sorry, Council Arnesson and Council Richter, opposed, motion carries. Thank you. F4, official community plan amendment and resoning application number 100195, development permit applications 101085, 101086, and development variance permit application 100121. That's a lot of numbers here. Bylaws 5559, 5560, and 5561. Can I have a motion, please? Council Ferguson and the Seconder. Council Davis, discussion? Council Richter?
Yes.
Let me get you on there.
First of all, I'd like to ask, what is a manor home? Have we ever had that come through before? Because I've never seen it before.
Mr. Sefi, can you provide a description?
Yeah, essentially, your worship, it's a fourplex. We have had them before in the past.
So it's, well...
Four units.
So, but it's a, there are four units attached.
Attached.
Attached. Why didn't, why don't they just call it a fourplex? Okay. Also, page three identifies that they're going to relocate and reconstruct water courses. I'm not real crazy about that idea. On page 13, 86 significant trees, none will be retained. There are 283 replacement trees required. A hundred and 29 will go on-site, but 154 will go elsewhere. And the last question that I have is, has the location of the pocket park been determined?
Mr. Sefi.
Thank you, your worship. The answer is, it has not. Staff has been actively working with several applicants to try and address that, and it's currently in the process of being addressed. Keeping in mind that it may not ultimately be addressed to the satisfaction of all parties, which means that it may be brought back to council for a consideration of alternative possibilities.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor, opposed. Council Richter and Council Arnesson, opposed. Motion carries. And we'll move on to F6, resoning application number 100602 and bylaw 5585. Can I have a motion, please? Council Davis, the Seconder. Council Whitmarsh, discussion? Council Richter?
I'm, whoops, very concerned about having a liquor store in this particular location, because I've been along 72nd Avenue at 208th many times, and the traffic backs up there. So I'm wondering how people are going to be able to access this liquor store.
Mr. Sefi.
Your worship, the designation and actually the zoning is retail commercial or service commercial, mixed use that allows for retail and service commercial. And I guess, within that designation, within that land use, there is, there are other potential uses that would have higher traffic generating numbers than a retail operation would. So what they're currently contemplating, the applicant is contemplating is taking over three units as opposed to a single one, and that will then result in either equivalent or even less per square foot of traffic or number of vehicles being generated per square foot than otherwise if it was three, three separate units, so.
Well, if they've got three units, that's going to be a pretty big liquor store, isn't it? Which would mean a higher volume of patronage.
There are 13, 13 units there currently. So this will be three of the 13.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Council Arnesson?
Yes, thank you, your worship. I'm through you to staff. I'm assuming that there are guidelines to let us know how many liquor stores should be within a certain radius, and whether or not at some point there is a saturation. And so I assume this doesn't offend those principles, but for me, I've noticed a number approximately, well, it's interesting, it says five, six, and seven, that they're going to consolidate there. But I would say, in the most recent past, there's been about five applications, and they're not very far away from this one. So I'm wondering why it is that we would necessarily want to change this use on this site for that purpose. And I would have appreciated, I suppose, if we had considered that while this application was going forward. I know it's not mandatory to do that, but I think it makes it more difficult after the fact, because I don't know exactly what the other uses are there, but it seems to me one of them might be a daycare that's beside it. So I just find, I'm not going to be supporting this. I think we have lots of liquor stores in the area.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, opposed. Council Arnesson, Council Richter, opposed. Motion carries. All right, so now we move on to bylaws for first, second, and third reading. And G1 is amendment to the council procedural bylaw for electronic meetings. And this amendment is required for us to meet remotely. It is, has a sunset clause on it, September 30th, and I think if council wishes to make this more permanent, we can do a more fulsome discussion of it at the time. And also, this is for public emergencies and disasters in the community, so there is a time limit. And I think the purpose of that was to, because of the emergent situation and the way we're presenting it, we kind of are pushing this through. So Council Long, you had some questions? Okay, it's moved. Second by Council Ferguson and Council Long. Let me get my mic on.
So you've described, your worship, one of the reasons that we're doing it for a timed period, but I would like to make sure that, is it easy to renew it then sometime between now and September? Because I guess I wouldn't see a downside to having it in place all the time. In fact, it would have been good if we had it in place prior to now, but however, we're doing it as best as we can this time. So, yeah, could I get that answer from staff, your worship?
Yeah, I'll ask the clerk, Ms. Bauer, or Mr. Back, Ms. Bauer or Mr. Backen, whoever wants to handle.
We could put a bylaw amendment forward or just do it by resolution of council to extend the, extend it.
And if we need to?
If we need to.
Yeah.
The reason that it is short-term, I guess is the best way to describe it, is we are in the process of going through the council procedure bylaw, and all other changes we're getting fulsome discussion, and this one we're kind of just doing quickly. So in an effort to make sure we all, we do get to discuss it, it was thought that this should be a temporary measure.
Thank you.
And I saw that in the report, your worship, that makes sense. But I would like to just earmark, I guess, that we do discuss this before we hit on September.
I think something when we look at our procedural bylaw, prior to the expiry...
Yeah, we'll make it a priority.
Thank you. Thank you. Council Woodward?
Yeah, is there any harm to just changing the date to the end of the year, December 31st, 2020, given the expectation from some that this is going to go on for a while? We don't have to worry too much about it. It would still expire, but we wouldn't have to deal with it over the summer or worry about it in September in any way. I don't see any harm to extending it to the end of the year. Anybody else? Doesn't, maybe that would be...
If you want to make an amendment, and I can certainly...
I'll move the amendment to the end of the year.
Second it to December 31st, 2020. So it's an amendment. So Council Long, on the amendment? Oh, hang on, let me get your mic on.
I'd go farther and just leave it in there permanently.
Well, you know, but, but it is, well, there is an amendment on the floor. I think we should deal with this one.
And I think we heard from Ms. Bauer why. It's because we didn't get a fulsome discussion on this as we have with other amendments, but I don't know if there's anybody in the room that feels that this is something we shouldn't have. I think it is something we should have in our, in the back of our procedural bylaw all the time, because you never know when an emergency is going to come up.
Okay, well, we'll deal with this one. And I do believe, and Ms. Bauer will confirm it, that we certainly will have lots of opportunity to make this permanent, and we can do that at any time prior to the end of December 31st. So I think it still gives us time to do that fulsome discussion, or maybe some other things, you know, that we can talk about. So I'm going to call the question, oh, on, on, Council Ferguson, on the, on the amendment.
Yeah, it's December 31st, right?
Yes.
Okay, and I just wanted to ask, can you, either as a friendly amendment or suggestion, and we would review it prior to just December 31st, because we get tied up in what we're doing, sometimes we forget. So I just wanted, I don't see any motion or just suggestion.
Can you take that as direction and put it on there?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Council Richter, let me get you on.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with Councilor Long on this one. I think we've learned a very valuable lesson, and we probably should have this provision permanently in our procedural bylaw. So I'm thinking we shouldn't have any date, we should just put it in, and if we want to change it down the road and limit it at that point, limit it then.
Thank you. All good points. I do still revert back to the fact that this has been put on rather hastily. The advertising for this bylaw actually occurred prior to first and second and third reading to comply with the legislative requirement of two weeks of advertising. So I understand what you're saying, that it'll be good to just put on, but I do see a responsibility to the residents that maybe we have a, make it temporary, so that when we do come back and it's permanent, there is that fulsome discussion, public information. And I don't think it's that, we've got a good, if this amendment passes, takes us to the end of the year, Ms. Bauer can bring it back to us way before that, and we can have that discussion. And that's the only reason I would say that I support this, so. So I'm going to call the question. All those in favor of the amendment, opposed. Council Richter is opposed, amendment carries. So now the motion as amended, I'll call the question. All those in favor, opposed. Is everybody in favor? Yeah. Oh, you have a question? Sorry. No, go ahead.
So we're going to have a full discussion, which is, which is good, because I'd like to discuss why it would only be in place in the cases of emergency, because other jurisdictions, I think, or local governments have it in place for other reasons. It could be someone that's ill, or somebody has to attend, family out of town, or for whatever reason, or, you know, so, you know, we'll have that discussion.
We'll have that discussion. And that's, that's exactly the reason.
Because maybe we can have...
We just want to make sure you're here and not up at your cabin.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, I'm going to call, oh, there was, I'm sorry, I apologize. There was a speaker's list, Council Woodward and Council Richter, otherwise on the main motion. Council Richter, you're, you're fine.
Well, I mean, it passed. I just think Councilor Long's right. We should have it in there, because Metro Vancouver has a provision in their bylaw that they can call a special meeting at any time, and that special meeting can be online. So at minimum, we need that, but we need to be able to have this, because who knows what the next event will be.
I agree. And so we do need that discussion to go to this point, so. Okay, I'm just to make sure, I'm going to call the question on the motion as amended. All those in favor, opposed, carries unanimously. Thank you. Now we get to G2. This is the Langley 2020, 2024 Five-Year Financial Plan bylaw and Development Cost-Charge Reserve Fund Expenditure bylaw. I would ask, first of all, before we put this motion on, there was a very fulsome discussion in the afternoon meeting regarding some amendments, and so the motion would be to move this as amended, and then staff can catch up with amendments when they write this up, but move it as amended in the afternoon meeting. It's moved by Council Woodward, Seconder. Council Whitmarsh, is there any discussion? Council Richter?
Yeah, I'm really happy that we're pulling the taxes back for everybody to 2% across the board this year. And I want to really thank council again for working together on this to make it happen for the residents.
Thank you. And I should just say, you know, for those that didn't see the afternoon discussions, the average tax increase prior to this pandemic that we had contemplated was a 4.02 across the board, but with a bit of a twist, we were going to do 2.98 for residential, and some commercial classes, five points, I forget the exact number, five, sorry, 5.95. Council, recognizing the pandemic and the emergency situation that we're in, some of the challenges our residents and businesses are going to have to pay the taxes, reduce it to 2.98, and then with some internal borrowing, the tax bill will be 2% across the board for all businesses and residents. We also added an amendment that the penalty, which by legislation we have to apply, we have no choice, it's provincial legislation, is reduced to 1.75 on the first business day in July, just after the taxes come out, but then it has to equal 10% by legislation, so the 8.25 would then be levied on November 15th if the taxes aren't paid by that time. But those are provincial rules that we don't have much control over. So it is a budget that will allow the township to continue to operate, but we're, we're in, going down a road that we don't have a really good roadmap on. And so we'll be working very closely with staff, and if they need further amendments, that'll come back to us. But we believe that this budget will get us through this year, and then we'll have a robust discussion, I'm sure, again, for the 2021 budget, where we have a little bit more information looking back on what's happened. So with that, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, opposed, carries unanimously. Thank you. G3 is the user pay utility rate bylaws for 2020, bylaw 5566 and 5567. Can I have a motion, please? Moved by Council Whitmarsh, second by Council Arnesson. Discussion, seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, opposed, that carries. And G4 is the Langley Fees and Charges Amendment by law. It's bylaw number 5593. Can I have a motion, please? Council Long, second by Council Woodward. Discussion, Council Richter and Woodward, next. Richter?
This is G4, correct?
G4.
Yeah, okay. So on page three, or on page three, it mentions, during a typical water park session, there are between 17 and 19 lifeguards, can understand that, 12 to 14 host staff, and two to four clerical staff. I'm wondering why there are so many host staff? I mean, what do they do? The lifeguards, I know, and the clerical people.
They're, they're, I know, they're monitoring the playground and, you know, a lot of that. They're not trained as lifeguards, but they're there to monitor. Is that, Mr. Backen, do you have any further information? I know that's, I've seen the hosts there.
Effectively, that's correct, your worship. The requirements for the park are to have a certain number of lifeguard staff, but also to have a certain number of parties that are watching all variations, such as playgrounds, such as other areas, for example, sitting areas. So when we tally those up, that's the totals you then see, and of course, the two clerical staff are primarily for the issuing and taking of tickets and funds.
Okay, thank you. Council Woodward? Just give me a second here, I'll get you on.
Just remind council about the potential for the non-residency fee differential for the water park area for the ACUCC. Obviously, this year, it's not included in the recommendation, but obviously, for this year, it doesn't matter very much, since it's closed. And then when it, if it does reopen sometime this year, obviously, we would want to look at the same price for all to ensure it's as busy as possible. So I think for this year, it makes sense to not look at that, given where we are, given where we were when we certainly brought that up. I want to remind everybody, I would like to postpone serious consideration of that to next year, assuming this situation is resolved, and consider it more seriously then and bring it back at that time, but obviously, for this year, it's not something to consider.
Thank you. Council Arnesson? Oh, sorry. Okay, Council Long?
Well, I'd like to make sure we don't discuss it at all. So, you know, we've had a great meeting, and we will continue to have tonight, your worship, but as the report very clearly says, that the residency-based admissions is not done anywhere else, and we did discuss, and perhaps this is something that we can discuss when it comes, is some kind of a discount for township residents if they want to buy multiple passes. But anyway, it's good that we proceed with what's been recommended, but I'm not that keen, as everyone knows, to make a differential rate for non-residents. There's plenty of families that bring friends from other jurisdictions, it's just going to be a kind of a gong show. Anyway, I guess we'll see what happens with this situation, to see even when and if the pool opens. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, opposed. Council Richter is opposed, and the motion carries. Okay, so now we go to bylaws for consideration and third reading. H1 is resoning application number 100484, development permit application number 100900, bylaw 5504 and 5511. Can I have a motion, please? Council Long, Seconder, have a second? Counsel Long, secondor. Have a second? Counsel Whitmarsh, or Whitmarsh seconds. Any discussion on H1? Counsel Richter?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. Question number one concerns the lot coverage being 40%, and I'm thinking that's awfully high. Why, why did we go to 40%?
Mr. Sefi, I think that's alone the zoning, but.
Your Worship, the lot sizes are such that the zoning bylaw provides for that kind of a coverage?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, my second question is, on page eight, it references cash and lieu for amenities. I'd like to know, what type of amenities are we getting cash for?
Sefi?
Sorry, Your Worship, was there a page number Counsel Richter referenced?
Eight, I have marked down here. Let me just refer to it.
I can, I guess, speaking generally, I can advise that there are a number of items that prior to the CAC becoming applicable throughout the township, the applications in Brookswood are required to contribute towards. That includes a, a number of items. So this essentially captures those.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Ferguson?
Oh, yes, I, I did want to ask a question regarding the landscaping, and I wanted to ask the staff, they've just met the minimum standards for landscaping for the 203th frontage, if I may.
Mr. Sefi?
They're, they're meeting the requirements of the bylaw, yes.
I would like to, if the council would permit me to ask the staff to enhance landscaping along the 200th Street corridor, the defronting, and the creative and shading requirements prior to the, not prior, in, in conjunction with the main thoroughfare of 200th be revisited such that it would be a, some sort of a creative onlook from 200th Street.
Mr., just before taking the amendment, Mr. Sefi, maybe just some comments on the landscaping and along 200th, and just want to make sure we don't.
Your Worship, the, as I said earlier, the application is complying with the zoning bylaw requirements and the, the requirements of the subdivision, subdivision development service in bylaw. If there are any specific recommendations, certainly, they can be incorporated, I think, to leave it a bit more generic, might be challenging for staff to make sure.
It's not the first time we've ever asked for increased density of landscaping or a creative landscaping plan to be enhanced. It's not the first time, and certainly, you can discuss that with the applicant. I'm not asking to change the building around or anything like that, but it's not the first time we've ever asked for that at the council table.
Your Worship, it's not, it is not the first time. I certainly wasn't arguing that or suggesting that. What I was hoping for was perhaps a bit more direction in terms of, was it the depth or the thickness, or was it the actual type of vegetation? That is certainly something that council has provided direction on before in terms of enhancements. Is it something that, that has to do with the width or, or the type of vegetation?
I'm actually, I guess, there's a type of, you would, I guess, both flowering on and off, both annually and subannually, probably trees and tree, tree selection, creative. I guess you've got a landscape, people. I mean, I don't want to defer this back so we can just debate it, and I can meet with your landscaping people, but certainly, something creative that would enhance. It's a main thoroughfare there on 200th into Brookswood.
Counsel Ferguson, perhaps if we go to the original renderings, I think I know where you're heading, so maybe we can explore that. Mr. Sefi, if you can bring back up the, the original versus the revised. As we look at those pictures, you can see the revised tends to have less tree cover and less shading than the original. Perhaps Counsel Ferguson, you're suggesting something more analogous to the original with some increased.
Absolutely, that's a great idea, yes.
Okay. Perhaps if your amendment was to provide landscaping on the front of those buildings consistent to what the original was, is that, does that give the direction you need?
Yes, that would be helpful.
Mr. Sefi, is that? Okay, okay, so then, secondor? Is there a secondor to that? Counsel Richter second, so. On the amendment, Counsel Long? Oh, sure. Just let me get your mic on.
So it was originally moved as a referral, now it's being moved as an amendment?
Amendment, yeah.
I don't think there was ever a referral.
It was not a referral? I misheard? Okay.
It wasn't, there was no secondor, so. Okay, thanks for that. So where are we now? Counsel Long?
Me, yeah.
Yeah, Counsel Long.
So, so the amendment is really to, to add some more trees, like in the original. Now, you're sure these haven't been switched, huh? Because the original looks pretty good all of a sudden, and the revised one looks pretty bare. So if that's what's being proposed, I think I can support that. But I wanted to, to comment before the suggestion of the trees came up, which is a good one, is that these, this will be a strata property, and they will have landscapers, and I would imagine the landscaping will change over years, you know, depending on, on what's being planted and whatever. I guess initially, the developer will do something, but over the years, a reminder, I'm sure folks who've lived in a strata before, things will change over years. Things will die, and things will be planted.
Thank you. Counsel Woodward on the amendment, and then Counsel Richter. Counsel Woodward? Oh, let me get you on, let me get you on.
Thanks, I can't tell if it's on or not.
I know it's.
So, yeah, no, I support the amendment, if only to hide the building more than, than the revised version shows. Certainly support hiding that building as much as possible, and rather than amendments, would be quite happy to just vote it down entirely. Thanks.
Thank you. Counsel Richter?
Yeah, I'm in concurrence with that, because we asked them to come back with something better, and it doesn't really look that much better to me at all. But I'm wondering, I, I think where Counselor Ferguson is going with this, 200th Street is going to be a very busy arterial, and it needs to be, have attractive frontages. And I don't know, maybe we should be putting something like one of those water gardens in along 200th Street. That's another thing that they could look at.
Okay, maybe the direction, but, thank you. All right, I'm going to call the question on the amendment. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously. So back to the main motion as amended. Any discussion for the discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Counsel Arnison, Davis, Woodward, Richter, so it's defeated on a tie vote. And so, as per my normal policy, when there's not a full council and a development goes down, I try to bring it back. So we'll see what happens on Friday with a full council. H2?
Wait, just a point of order.
Sure.
Are you, are we able to bring back development applications for a special meeting agenda?
It's not a develop, this is a third reading.
Oh, so it's, so the bylaw reading, a reading of a bylaw, we can bring those back for a special meeting?
I can bring, I can reconsider it.
At a special meeting, or would you require a regular scheduled meeting for that?
I don't think it requires a regular scheduled meeting. No, I can bring it back.
You can bring it back, okay, well, that'll be fine.
Yes, and that's fine, it's, it's, yeah, Counsel Long.
My notes very carefully, and there were no speakers at the public hearing that were opposing this, so.
But that's fine, we don't need to discuss it now. I have, I have in the past, and when there's a tie vote on a development, I do, and it's a, you know, a member missing, I do like to bring it back so that full council can, can consider it. H2, rezoning application number 100480, and development permit application number 100897, bylaw 5562 and 5563. Could I have a motion, please? Counsel Arnison, second by Counsel Davis. Any discussion on H2? Counsel Richter, let me get your mic on. Counsel Richter?
Yeah, I'm, I'm still very puzzled how all the significant trees used to be north-south, and now all of a sudden, they've migrated east-west, so I'm not supporting this. I think there's too many significant trees being lost in the southern portion of this development.
Thank you. Any other discussion, comments? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of H2? Opposed? Counsel Richter is opposed, and the motion carries. Thank you. The bylaws for final adoption, this is I1, official community plan amendment and rezoning application number 100165, development permit application numbers 100929 and 100934, vested properties, bylaw 5386 and 5387. Could I have a motion, please, on force? Counsel Whitmarsh, second. Have a secondor? Counsel Davis, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Counsel Woodward, Counsel Richter opposed. The motion carries. And so we move on to other business, so I will give notice that I will be bringing back H1 for reconsideration at the next meeting. And is there any other business? Counsel Richter? Let me get your mic on.
Do all our declarations and all that yet?
I'm sorry?
Oh.
Oh, yeah, supplemental, so now, now we're into other business, that's right, we go to the supplemental, yeah.
Yeah.
So I, you know, it's okay to ask for other business right now, and then we'll go into the supplemental, so.
Okay, so I just wanted to know about monitoring of social physical distancing in parks, trails, and dog runs. I had a query, a public query today, that people are not staying, you know, 3 meters away from each other in these areas, as well as basketball hoops in parks and schools. Are those being removed, as they have been in Vancouver?
Yeah, in Vancouver, they've, they're taking them down, so we, we don't have the authority to go into the school grounds to remove hoops. However, I believe there's some basketball courts at Langley, or Willoughby Park, at the Langley Event Centre, and so I think staff could take a look at that. And the idea is to close out some of the areas where people could congregate, and so certainly, staff can take that back. But we can't do anything about the school properties, we certainly.
The concern came to me from a resident in the 84th and 207A area, so that's Willoughby, and there were five young fellows out there with a basketball, and they're just, if they're infected, sharing it with each other by playing that game.
Yeah, so we can look at that. And as far as the distancing, Dr. Henry has made that recommendation. It's not an order, so it's not enforceable, but certainly, we have signs everywhere in the parks and all about the distancing, and, and, you know, if they make the order, then we have the ability to enforce it. But at this point, because it's not an order from the health officer, we don't have that ability. And the township of Langley, or all municipalities have been asked by Minister Farnerworth to work with the, the health, follow their orders, and so we go as a consistent throughout the province, consistent orders throughout the province. So certainly, I think that's something that they're hearing a lot of, and.
Okay. And the other question is with regards to businesses that are not observing social distancing. There's been a couple of cases that have come up through social media in the last week. One is a, I don't know, some sort of a laser tag gymnasium type thing, as well as grocery stores, so.
Yeah.
What, what are the onuses on business to make sure that they're not putting people in a situation where this could be spread?
Yeah. What I understand is, Dr. Henry, and, well, you have a restaurant, maybe you can help. You probably know this intimately, Counsel Woodward, you know, you put your hand up, maybe. That's, yeah, that's right, and so, and so the order was.
But all personal services are closed.
Yeah, personal services are closed, restaurants, but I know the one you're talking about, and that's something that we, we'd send up to the, went to the ELC, and then also, they'd be in contact with Fraser Health and, and a phone call. There's no order to close those types of facilities yet, so without an order, we're, our hands are tied, and it's still, I believe the order for gatherings is no more than 50, but if it's 50 or less, they need to exercise distancing. But I don't know, if anybody can help me with that on the orders, I know it changes every day. The chief is here. There is no order on distancing. We can't enforce that as a municipality, can we? No. So that has to come from the, the health officer.
Okay, so if people are observing this
Yes.
as they're visiting these businesses and they're concerned about it, who should they be contacting?
Certainly, they can come through us, and we'll, we'll pass it right on to the ELC, and which gets passed on to the, to health. Is that correct, chief, or is there another way to, we can do, they can do this?
Look, it's going to be posted on the conference website and direct people where to go.
Okay.
Fraser Health does have a hotline.
Okay, so we will have that up fairly shortly on, on the webpage, so. Okay, now it's fast-moving.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Woodward, did you?
Yeah, following up on that reminded me about, I've been had, had multiple contacts regarding sportsplex, and whether or not that would fall under the same category, that we don't have the jurisdiction to close them, and they're allowed to remain open under the 50 restrict, the maximum of 50 restriction, and there's nothing we can do about that as a municipality. Would that be correct?
That's correct. It's a private facility. We, we close our facilities, but it's a private facility, as long as they're not having groups larger than 50. That's the order.
So we would have to go in and count 50, but even if it was us to count the 50, we wouldn't necessarily have the authority to do anything about that?
We would. If it's over 50, the order of the provincial health officer is, is an order that can be enforced by a peace officer. So we could then send in the RCMP to enforce it. A peace officer can enforce those orders if there's more than 50, and it, it just, it, again, it depends on how, if they're 50 in a room like this, like 51, I should say, then that can be enforced. If it's 50 spread out, they're not in one room, maybe that's a different.
And if that location is not enforcing social distancing, who's the, does the responsibility for the social distancing fall to the patrons or to the business operator?
Well, maybe the chief can help me with that one. Social distancing, again, it's, it's a recommendation by the health officer, not an order. We certainly want, they certainly want everyone to do it, but they can't enforce it. So it's up to the proprietor to, to enforce that, I don't know.
And do you know, Mr. Mayor, also, because I'll follow up on that as well, do you know if there's been any discussion? Well, you would know, it's a question between you and staff regarding heading in the direction of Vancouver in terms of more significant fines to enforce these orders?
Once, what Vancouver does, they have their own local state of emergency. They made their own order, so they can enforce that. My understanding is probably within a week or so that all local state law, all local declarations of emergency will be, will be suspended by the province, so then it, but then this province also is going to be coming through with some orders over the next few days, I'm, I'm assuming, and then that will replace them. So meanwhile, I think in, in the vacuum, cities like City of Vancouver and a couple others have put in their own local state of emergency, which are only valid for seven days anyway, and, and to deal with some of these emergent issues, but then they can enforce it. If we were to make an order as the municipality, and that's really, has to come from the ELC, then it, it triggers the enforcement part of it, but.
So if I could maybe follow up with staff, and if I could get some education to the public on the Township of Langley Facebook page and other, other avenues, that, you know, what our capabilities are, and which authorities to contact when they see something like sportsplex open and people not obeying the social distancing request?
Yeah, exactly, and that's really, I think, I know they've been working hard in getting that Facebook, our Township page, our Facebook page up with all of these, you know, requests.
Because it is confusing for people, yeah.
It is confusing, and hopefully, there'll be some more clarity this week from the province.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Counsel Ferguson?
Well, mine was another matter. I said, I believe the LMLGA is, I guess, postponed, or whatever you might call it. I was wondering if we have the ability to, or council wishes to support the, the city of Port Coquitlam in having Terry Fox as pitcher put on the $5 bill. Is that a notice of motion? I was going to wait till the LMLGA, but they've canceled that.
Okay, they've canceled, so, so that's a motion they put forward. It'd be nice if they sent the motion to us. Has Port, who's it, Port Coquitlam or Port, what do you?
Port Coquitlam, Terry Fox, Port Coquitlam, right?
So they put, the city's put a motion.
So others have supported them, I just wanted to move, either a letter or something, support them?
Certainly, that can be a motion, but it'd be nice if we saw their, their letter, if you could get a letter to us for next.
Yeah, a letter would be fine.
Yeah.
Do I, can I make that motion now?
Sure.
The letter be sent to the, to you?
They should send us, I haven't seen, I haven't seen the motion yet. I mean, it'd be nice if council.
Okay, no, I'll, I'll, I'll bring it to next meeting.
Sure, that'd be good.
Sure, okay, very good.
Thank you. Counsel Richter?
I know that Arbor Day is scheduled coming up, but in the event that this is ongoing, what, are we going to just go ahead and plant the trees and have a gathering afterwards? Or how, how are we going to handle that?
I've had some discussions. It sounds like, I think the decision was going to be made this week, but it looks pretty obvious it's going to be canceled. However, what staff are going to do is continue to plant the trees and put up the, the placard and advise the families that it's there, so families can go as they wish. But it won't be an official township gathering anymore, but it will be done, and they will be advised this year. So perhaps maybe we can do something in another year, but it's going to be, it hasn't been canceled yet, but it's going to be very shortly, so. I did have a chat with Eric.
And, and on that same note, the, the tulip festival that went, I mean, when can people drive by and have a look at?
Well, certainly, the parks are open, and people can go and take a look at the beautiful orange tulips when they bloom, but the, the gathering that we had planned is, is canceled also. So it's up to individuals to go take a look at it, but we're not encouraging.
When do we anticipate that they'll be in full display?
Yeah, Margaret, we have to ask Margaret, she's not here.
Yeah. Well, maybe we can ask her Friday.
That's right, that's right. Okay, is there any other business, and then we'll go to the supplemental agenda. Okay, so that clears that off. All right, we move on to the supplemental agenda and, and other business. Declaration of a State of Local Emergency, and could I have a motion, please? Counsel Long, second. Counsel Arnison, any discussion, questions? I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously. Move on to council meetings, and just a little preamble. Again, council makes a, a motion at the beginning of the term, or beginning of the year, and sets a council calendar. Because of the unique situation we find ourselves in, felt it was best to cancel all of the public hearings, all the council meetings, but we keep them in the calendar. They will just be called by, I believe it's the mayor or the clerk, right? And so they'll be called on those dates. We anticipate holding those meetings, but this allows the clerk the flexibility to make one meeting, set the time, and we'll have the authority to, you know, when the bylaw passes on Friday, to call in. So it, it is interesting times, so this has been done for two months. We could certainly revisit and extend it if we need to, but the idea was. We could certainly revisit and extend it if we need to, but the idea was, we don't want to start canceling every meeting in the year. We just want to make sure that we can work with some flexibility, give staff a lot more flexibility. Counsel Richter, and then Whitmarsh? Oh, let me get your mic on. There you go.
Yep. I'm a little concerned with the wording here, that council hereby cancels. I would feel more comfortable with wording along the lines of that council hereby converts the following scheduled meetings of council to a special meeting, a special general meeting, as needed and called by the chair. Because I, I think this motion just gives people the idea, we're washing our hands and walking away and going home, and we're not.
No, we're not. I, I, I think your, your motion, your thoughts are good. If we do it without that last piece you put down, Chair, if we do it just as, to convert them over, then again, we've done the same thing. We now have a motion of council for a meeting, that would have to have another motion of council to, to cancel if, if the clerk decided we didn't need to have a meeting that, that week. So, Ms. Bauer can help with the language, because these will be called, but we don't want to put it in a motion, we take away the flexibility. Ms. Bauer, do you have any suggestions? I, I hear what Counsel Richter's saying, we don't want to have the wrong impression out there that we're canceling our meetings, we're not. We're just taking them out of the calendar, and they will come in, back in the calendar as needed, at the call of the clerk or the mayor.
Well, can we not just use the word in council hereby converts the following scheduled meetings of council to special general meetings of council as needed, based on the call of the chair? Doesn't that do the same thing?
Yeah, Madam Clerk, because that's the same thing, as needed by the call of the chair or the clerk. But that's the same, it's just.
My suggestion might be then we add the word "special meetings" as scheduled.
As, as scheduled.
It gives us the flexibility to.
Yeah, we need the flexibility.
To put them on, you know, normally we would try and continue on the Mondays, but if we had a reason to continue them on another day, we may have to, it would give us a little bit of flexibility that way.
We could call it for the Tuesday instead of the Monday.
Special meeting, so it's, we would change it to read, "Council hereby converts the following scheduled meetings of council to special meetings as needed"? Is that what you said? As scheduled, okay.
That gives us flexibility still, Madam Clerk, okay, so that's an amendment.
So I would make that amendment.
Is there a seconder to the amendment? Counsel Anderson seconds it. Any discussion on the amendment? Okay, I'm gonna call the question on the amendment. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries, just me opposed. Not that I'm against it, but it just complicates it. So, the motion as amended, oh, Counsel Whitmarsh wanted to speak to you.
Yeah, on the, on the motion.
Yep.
So, just so I understand, so the, the meetings are, the meetings are still going to happen, but we're, we're not, we're not bound by these dates anymore, they could be any date, but we still plan on having the meetings?
That's right, so we, we plan on having them on the dates that are here, that's, that's our, our hope. The thing is, we, we're not sure about holding public hearings, because of the changing, how do we get a public hearing, we're all on the phone. So we, we don't have good direction on that, so that cancels them. With this direction, the clerk can then combine an afternoon and an evening meeting into one, say we're gonna have it at 2 o'clock, we can, you know, we can go through it at 7 o'clock, it gives the flexibility on this changing environment. If, for example, there is nothing on the agenda, we could, we wouldn't have to have the meeting. So, by taking them out of the, the published calendar, it, it gives flexibility. We, we wanted to have, have, I think, obviously some flexibility over the next two months, we don't know what's, what's coming. And, and council, as, because the ELC has been set up, and we have now declared a local state of emergency, is maybe required by the ELC for some policy direction, and so that meeting has to be called fairly quickly to, and I, and I can't foresee what that would be, but we are required to provide policy direction. So, ELC would come to us, say, hey, we need a policy, we need approval from council, we'd call a meeting and it would go through. So, we're in an emergency situation, and we do need to give a lot of flexibility to staff. Yet council, they can't do things without council approval, so.
Right, so I guess, just from a practical point of view, what kind of timing would there be to let council know that there's going to be a meeting? Are we given 24 hours' notice, or are we given?
The, the minimum is 24 hours' notice, but keep these dates in your calendar.
Right, so these dates stay, but if we're gonna have a Wednesday meeting, I'm assuming there has to be notice?
Minimum 24.
If, if a number can't make it, I'm assuming we're gonna find an alternative time?
It's, as long as there's quorum, it depends on the situation. If it's fast-moving, we need to have a meeting, we'll call, and if there's quorum, we'll, we'll move through. But it'll be 20, minimum is 24-hour notice, it could be longer, it could be a week's notice, but.
Okay, and, and the system for, which is maybe a bit different, but the system for electronic meetings has not been determined yet? Like what kind of app we would use, or software, those kind of things?
IT's working on it with the clerk, and I'm not sure what they've come to.
Okay, so that's still to come. All right, thank you.
Up with that. At this time, it looks as though we'll be using the product Zoom?
Zoom, okay, okay, thanks. Counsel Richter?
Just to pick up on the Counsel Whitmarsh's comments, in the event that one of these special meetings is called, and there is no quorum, so no decisions can be made, what happens then?
Then we can't have a meeting.
We can't, so we have to reschedule for another day?
Yeah, we have to have quorum.
Okay.
Under the.
So I just wanted to make sure that the, the power of council still rests with council. It's not gonna be usurped to another.
Yeah, I'll call a meeting when nobody's around.
Yeah, okay.
No, it has to be quorum, that, in the legislation, there is requirements, if there's extending circumstances, and, and, you know, five councillors decide to quit, then the province then steps in and determines what quorum is. Did you see that? Counsel Long?
Yeah, well.
Let me get you on.
It's extraordinary times, so we need to be on duty, and with the motion that we passed with electronic meetings, there shouldn't be a reason why we couldn't get quorum, I wouldn't think. We've all got the gadgets, and, and hopefully we'll have the program and learn how to use it. So I see this as being a very efficient way of continuing under the circumstances, and I think the more meetings that have to be called, I'm not saying we should call them for no reason, but if we have to call a meeting, we need to be on guard, and I'm prepared to be.
Thank you. Counsel Ferguson?
I just wanted to, could you read the actual sentence where we've made the amendment? If I may, through the clerk?
Bauer, can we read that?
The current amendment would read, "Council hereby converts the following scheduled meetings of council to special meetings to be scheduled."
The word "convert," okay? Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously. Move on to bylaws for first, second, and third reading, a temporary borrowing bylaw for McLeod Athletic Park Capital Works, land acquisition, strategic land acquisition, and municipal security issuing resolution, bylaw 5594, 5595, and 5596. Can I have a motion, please? Counsel Whitmarsh, a seconder, I have a second. Counsel Ferguson. Miss, I'm gonna take questions, but I want a little, it's a bit of a, I want a little explanation from staff, and then certainly ask some questions, so, Mr. Backen?
Thank you, Your Worship. As you may recall, we embarked upon a strategic borrowing earlier this year, later last year. And this is, this process has now been endorsed by the government, we have our, the Ministry of Municipal Affairs, we have necessary approvals. So that, that process means we can now launch the borrowing process, which can start anywhere between now and the end of the year. The purpose of these temporary bylaws is that it allows us to draw the funds down incrementally, as opposed to in one lump sum. So in theory, we could draw them down now, it would take some time before they register, or later in the fall, depending upon when the bonds are issued by the MFA. This allows us to borrow instead incrementally, as we need to going forward, to meet the contractual obligations that we set up pursuant to the previous direction of council.
Thank you. Miss, Counsel Richter? Let me get your mic on, there we go.
Yeah, I, I'm still not understanding why we need, if we've passed a borrowing bylaw, which we have, why we now need a temporary borrowing bylaw? Like, why wouldn't we have put, drawdown incrementally in the borrowing bylaws we passed the first time? Like, I, I don't understand the logic here.
Yeah, so Your Worship, when MFA goes to market, they don't do bite-sized pieces, they would do one large bond, and it would involve other communities potentially, we're only concerned about ourselves. So hypothetically, then, if it was, use a round number only, if it was $100 million, as you go forward, then you draw down the $100 million. That means your interest bills begin to accrue immediately upon that drawdown. With the interim borrowing bylaws, it gives you a period of time that you can draw them down incrementally as you have the deals closed. So it might be, in my example, 20 million in the first quarter, 20 million the second quarter, and 50 million later on, thereby saving your interest costs as you go forward, and gives you a better position to proceed.
Okay, is there an end date for this temporary borrowing bylaw?
It's replaced by the permanent borrowing once they're all drawn down, that's when MFA issues the bonds, so it would likely be by the end of the year, but this is, is as companion to the permanent borrowing, if you will.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Counsel Woodward?
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions as well. Why was this in the supplemental and not part of the regular course of council business?
The approvals only came forward Friday, late last week.
Late last week, okay, so that's good to clarify. And my last question, what happens if, if council votes this down? Bad things, I'm assuming?
Then in that case, because we have been qualified for the financing, the subject clause that we have on our transactions is now moot, so then we have a breach of contract situation.
Yeah, so is there some way, if we do this in the future, just from my own information, that as a council, if we approve the purchase of the asset, that we can link that same vote to the borrowing mechanism in the future?
It's something we've.
Rather than commit, and then have to come back to council for these bylaws?
It's something we've been trying to work through, it's, it's very challenging. The system actually, just like with budgets, often has two or three votes on it, which is highly inefficient and very difficult. It's something we have under exploration with ministry, although it appears these questions have not frequently been asked of them.
Because it's, it's kind of interesting to me, just as a, as a new councillor, that, you know, we can have members of council approve the asset purchase, but then vote against the borrowing bylaws, right?
Correct.
Correct, thanks you.
But if this was to fail, you revert back to drawing down the entire, like you said, if it's 100 million, and then we'd be incurring a greater expense on interest, is that?
In this case, that's what would naturally follow, yeah.
All right, seeing no further discussion, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Counsel Richter is opposed, the motion carries, thank you. Move on to bylaws for final adoption, this is 2020 development cost charges bylaw, bylaw 5555, can I have a motion, please? Counsel Ferguson, Counsel Whitmarsh, second. Discussion, all those in favor? Opposed, carried, thank you. And, okay.
Excuse me, we need to go back to the final, the final rezoning that we've adopted, we missed the, we missed the DPs.
DP, I'm, okay, so on the, where was that? That was, I missed the DP, I was rushing through.
It's I-1.
I-1. So I'm gonna ask for motion for the development permit on I-1. Counsel Long, second. I have a seconder. Counsel Ferguson, all discussion, all those in favor? Opposed? All in favor?
I don't have I-1 in front of me, so I don't know.
It's, you just go back to the, it's one of the last things we did on the agenda, before we went to the supplemental agenda, another business, just before the business. So it's final adoption of the Vestas properties.
Okay, so I'm opposed to that.
Okay, so it's, Counsel Woodward, Counsel Richter opposed the DP, carries. And we've gone through other business, so we now need a motion to terminate. Counsel Davis, a seconder, a second, Counsel, second, Whitmarsh, all those in favor, opposed, carried. So now we're gonna move into the public hearing, so we'll just give a minute for, for that.